Okay, it's five o'clock. I'll call to order the Village Board of Oregon for Tuesday, May twentieth, twenty, twenty-five. You know, momentary pause.
Because Candy's not ready. All right, sorry.
You bet. Ask the clerk to call the roll.
Higgins.
Here.
Kirchdorfer.
Here.
Knipfer.
Here.
Manke.
Here.
McDaniel.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
And Van Campen.
Here, thank you. Item three, public appearances, comments, and communications, and for discussion, possible action, a public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the Village Board, including items on and off the agenda. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this item with a three-minute maximum per speaker. Anyone here for public comments? No, seeing none. Item four, business items for discussion and possible action, A. Operational capacity challenges, planning for the 2026 budget, conducting organizational strategic planning. Martin has a presentation for us.
Yes, I actually have a PowerPoint.
PowerPoint, okay.
All right, folks. Does that all come down? So I'm gonna do a little bit of a presentation here on what was in the packet. I don't need subtitles. All right, there we go.
And yes, you are being recorded.
Yeah, well, yeah. It was starting to show like, say what I was saying in front of me. It was like recording me, like, taking subtitles. All right, so I'm gonna give a little bit of presentation here. I'm gonna cover really what was in the packet and the memo, and just talk through that for the purpose of explaining some pieces of it, and also for the benefit of people who may be watching or interested in this. So as we talked a few meetings ago when we set up this meeting, we really wanted to set aside a special meeting to spend some time to talk about some of these issues in depth outside of our regular governing meeting. And it really comes down to these three very complex but very interconnected challenges that you as a board are facing. So obviously, we want to talk about the April 2025 operational referendum and the impact of that being rejected. The, of course, we have to plan for the 2026 village budget. Whether we like it or not, that's coming, and so we need to be prepared for that. And then we've, over the last few years, we've done a couple iterations of a Village Board strategic plan. And those have been two-year plans, very nuts and bolts plans, focusing on different goals and things that the Village Board is wanting to achieve. And so the last one we did was in 2023, mid-23. So that one is sort of, and reaching its planning horizon here. And so all these things are kind of connected. And what this really all boils down to as far as just a core problem when we talk about these, these issues, and I don't think I'm saying anything here that's surprising to anybody on the board, especially these first three things. We had a similar conversation and similar meetings last year, in April and May and June of last year, when we had conversations about these, these issues. And it really all comes down to this first one here, which is strained operational capacity. And we have a mismatch that's occurring between increasing demands, initiatives, and the available resources that we have as an organization to, to do those things. And so when we talk about resources, we're talking about our staff, time, and both in quantity and then also in quality, speaking to focus. Funding, of course, actual dollars, and then also expertise. Our staff and things that we have available to us only have a certain amount of, and types of expertise that we have available to us. And the, this is compounded by increasing service demand. So this issue isn't getting better, it's getting worse. Our community continues to grow. It's driving higher demand for our existing services, and it's challenging our operational capacity. And on the revenue side, we have some pretty strict limitations on where we can get revenue from and how much revenue we can get, especially for operating specifically. And last year, the Village Board at that time, you know, looked at these issues and decided that a referendum was the solution, was the, the intention of, of addressing this. And that was, of course, defeated. And so the referendum outcome, you know, suggests some, some initiatives and current service levels and costs, or resource, the way we use resources, might be exceeding our community's expectations, or at least the willingness to fund them, or maybe a combination of both of them. And so now we need to revisit this issue and examine what is the approach that the board wants to take. And what all these things do in terms of these problems and what they cause is some of the things that we have listed here. So staff overload and burnout, what does that do? That decreases morale, decreases productivity, it increases turnover. It's too much for people. They may be asked to do things that, when they got the job, it didn't, it didn't exist like that. They're doing, being asked to do things that maybe don't align with their expertise. And so, you know, when you have that turnover, then it also creates recruitment challenges. We don't live in, you know, we're not isolated here. I mean, people, these industries and these employees and different, you know, expertise have connections, and they talk, and they, they know which communities are, are good to work for and not good to work for. And so you have this vicious cycle of, you know, your staff being overloaded, burned out, they leave, and then you have recruitment challenges to getting quality staff because of that. Decline in service quality. So as we get stretched out, we have the potential for errors. We have inconsistent service delivery. We defer strategic work. Being fast becomes more important than quality. We want to try to get things off of our plate because we have so much on our plate. Breakdown and prioritization. So our focus is fragmented, some of our mission starts to drift. We start to neglect critical functions. When we're asked to do too many things, how do we decide what's important? And so then we start to do all of those things. Loss of innovation. So when you are in that environment and you're reacting just to everything that's in front of you, you don't have a lot of time to be proactive. You can't plan, you can't adapt to things that are coming. Erosion of public trust, unmet expectations can lead to resident frustration. You know, this takes the form of things like, nobody followed up with me. Hey, I called staff, and it took them five days to get back to me. There was a five-day list before you. And so you start to hear things like that, and then people start to have mistrust and get frustrated about those expectations. Leadership strain, crisis management supersede strategic direction. You know, this is what's the fire of the day, right? What is in front of me, I need to take care of that now. And that's what starts to be the priority. And this looks like, for, for a lot of our department head staff, we're turning back vacation time. We have a lot of department heads who, you know, they get two years to use their vacation time, and they don't even have enough time in those two years to feel like they can take those vacations. And so they lose that time. And in my assessment, and I think if you went and asked every department head here, I think, if you would go down that list, I think you would get a lot of nodding heads of, yep, these things are happening. These things are happening in my department, and I see them happening in other people's departments as well. And so when these things are happening, what does that do? It causes liability, increases risk, and it pretends a future where something might break, something serious might happen. The level of severity of the issue continues to worsen. And so, you know, we kind of talked about this in the, the few meetings and setting up this meeting, and just sort of briefly touching on these issues. But, you know, how do you go about addressing something like this? You know, this is a very complex challenge. There isn't a, a technical solution here, right? There's no, you know, we're not trying to design a sewer plant, which is a very technical thing, right? This is a very complex challenge. There's conflicting values, conflicting interests, interest involved. And really, the only way to address it is, is with all of you. You know, that really rests with you as a board. You guys have the legitimacy, you have the accountability to weigh these different conflicts. You hopefully, that's informed by expertise and data that, you know, staff or maybe consultants can provide. But then you align those solutions with those values and with that expertise and data. And I want to, you know, zoom out a little bit in talking about this. You know, so when we talk about these roles and as far as, you know, the Village Board and Village Staff, and how we sort of approach these issues, you know, again, you, you determine priorities, you balance these values, you allocate limited resources. These are inherently political decisions that you have the legitimacy to make. As far as, you know, my role in supporting you and, and the staff's role, it is support for both the board and its work, but then also to implement the policy decisions that you make. And so, you know, we look at that through a lens of, you know, helping to ensure that your discussions, your decisions are well-informed, they're feasible when enacted, and they're very grounded and a very good process. And so sometimes I think it gets lost a little bit in terms of, you know, what is the staff's approach? What is our lens when we're bringing things to the board versus what is the approach and the lens that you all are bringing when you come to do your work? And, you know, I'll say, we don't filter through a political lens, right? And you don't want us to. You hire us not to do that. We are to give you information, we're, we're to strive to be neutral, nonpartisan. You want to hear things that maybe you don't want to hear. You don't want those things to not be filtered and not be provided to you. And so in everything that we do, you know, you should always be aligning the information that we give to you, even if it's expert advice. You need to align that with your values that you are getting from your constituents. And so sometimes in these conversations, especially with these kind of complex challenges, you know, there's some pitfalls that happen between, you know, how staff can help you navigate these things and, and what your role is in that. And, you know, want to be careful to say, staff, when we're suggesting things for ideas or ways to address this, our, our way we're approaching this is we want to facilitate this greater clarification and elicit more direction from you, right? We're not, we're not giving you an idea or a path to say, this is what we prefer, this is the decision you have to make, or this is even a consensus amongst all of the staff that this is an option or a path that we think is good. We're just trying to help frame the conversation, give some ideas, give some guidance so that we can get a little bit better understanding of, of where you are aligning all of these different factors. So sometimes, you know, that may look like elected leaders may sometimes project your own, their own assumptions onto staff suggestions. Again, overinterpreting ideas is, oh, this is strategic. You know, Martin is telling us this because this is the thing we have to do. Well, that's not necessarily the case, right? I mean, you need to take those ideas. I'm sharing my experience, my background, my education. But that doesn't necessarily mean that that's the right thing for the situation or the right thing for the village at this time. And I think a couple of meetings ago, I think Tom kind of made this point of like, in these situations, it's, you know, you look at us, and then we look at you, and then you look back at us, and it's, so this is why it's important to kind of understand, we can bring you information, we can bring you ideas, but you always have to make sure that you are filtering that through your role and your lens and, and the political side of things. So talking about, I guess, zooming back in a little bit from a little, some of those abstract things. So, all right, so we have framed kind of the larger context of the problems. We talked about consequences. I think we understand a proactive approach is, is important here. And we've talked about how we can kind of approach addressing these conversations. So I'm gonna talk about some of the options. I had three options in my memo here, and I'll, I'll go through those. But again, you know, these are, these are options that are presented to help kind of create a parameter for your discussion. They're not endorsements. It's really to help, you know, your thinking and, and to facilitate your, your discussions on this. And so the, the first option I had in there was you can go back to an operational referendum. So that's still an option. And so we're, we can talk about the revenue side again. This was the, again, the choice that the board made last year in assessing these challenges. And so we could go back, and we can apply the lessons from this recent attempt. I think probably the most viable election coming up, if we're gonna do it in the short term, would be the November one in 2026. And we talked about this a little bit last year too, was for what data does exist about municipal referendums, November elections do historically show higher rates of approvals. For whatever reason, the electorate type, the, the location and the timing in the year, whatever reason, the data shows that they seem to be approved at higher rates. And, you know, April elections are a little bit inherently difficult. There's local races on the ballot, so you have the potential to have an opposition run if you're supportive of the referendum. That creates sort of a, a different dynamic politically to think about. But also, April elections are not too far off from when people got property tax bills. So that, it's a little fresh in their minds, right? They, they just paid that big bill, and now it's, now you're asking me for more money. So there's some challenges with, with timing there. And I did talk to, had a conversation with the folks at Mueller Communications. They were our public relations and communications firm for the referendum. And they reiterated, this is one of their points too. It's just, you know, the data just shows that November is, is a better election, and April is just a little bit harder from a PR standpoint. In terms of approaching it, you know, I think we would do, I would suggest a, a similar approach in terms of just the resources that we bring on, in terms of consultants. I think in terms of like a community survey that we did during that process, I think we do something similar to that. And I really think that needs to be focused on, more on service priorities. You know, what, what would you support of the different things that we do? And, and public safety is one that, again, that's, at least throughout the state, is one that seems to cause referendums to be, to be passed. They, they just are, they're just more valued for, for, for a variety of reasons, of course. And they seem to have more success when, when referendums are focused on public safety. The funding potential, I think, going through what we went through and sort of learning and thinking about some of those things, you know, I think we're gonna think probably a lot less than what we, we went for in the 2025 one. You know, here again, sort of having an after-action conversation with the Mueller Communications folks. There were thirteen referendums that they were aware of that were on the ballot in April for municipal referendums throughout the state. Number one, they said, public safety. So about half were approved, half were rejected. The ones that were approved were public safety-focused. And they had a, an impact on a median value home of about $200 or less. So those were kind of the two things that stuck out to them as for, you know, the difference between the ones that succeeded in April and the ones that didn't succeed in April. But the process is, it's very resource-intensive. I think we, you know, we went through that over the last year. I think people could see that. There was a significant hard-dollar investment. We're approaching about $120,000 that we invested into that process. And then the soft cost of staff hours. Certainly, my time was significantly impacted by that process. Department heads as well. And so what we're saying, if we're going back, is we're saying, again, we're taking resources and we're dedicating them to this thing, which means they're not going to be committed to something else. And for this, in this case, you know, another failure, you know, if this is November 2026 we're talking about, we're gonna be almost three years into basically doing referendum stuff, and we will have nothing recouped from that. So that is a huge, huge resource commitment to, to consider. The other thing I think we need to consider too, and as far, as far as another referendum, if we're gonna do one in November 2026, is the senior center project or just generally capital projects in totality. The senior center project is, is high-profile enough, it's costly enough that if you're building that project, which could be potentially ready for construction as soon as spring of next year, it's, it's high-profile enough where if we're constructing that and we're trying to go to a referendum, the challenges of explaining operational versus capital, I, I don't think we're gonna be able to overcome that. And I think we need to understand that that project would need to delay and possibly be tied into that referendum in some manner. The other challenge with that, though, is we understand that we need to do that project. I mean, if, if that's a service and that we're going to maintain and deliver in a quality fashion, we know that that facility does not deliver the service that it needs to deliver in a functional way. And so, you know, I've talked to a few of you about this and had this conversation. If you know you need to build a public facility, yes, it's expensive, but the time to do it is tomorrow, right? Because if you wait another year, the inflationary cost, and we know this from the library project, the more you wait, it just adds and adds and adds and adds. And so if you know you need to do it, you gotta rip the Band-Aid off and do it. The other thing we would need to think about would be utility rates. So we have current plans in our financial management plans that project increases for both water and sewer in the next 12 months. How do you reconcile that when you're asking for more money on the tax side, right? So we're getting into tax fatigue, right? Things have been increasing. We have increased on our side for capital projects. Our debt levy has gone up quite a bit. The school district side has gone up quite a bit from their referendum over the last three years. We've added increases onto the water utility, increased to sewer utility. And a lot of those are necessary. There's a lot of things that we needed to do, we needed to catch up on in terms of infrastructure. And we went 20 years without a, a rate increase for water and sewer. So how do we reconcile those things? You know, we need to think about all of those things. Things out of our control, economic climate, I think, you know, there's some impact. I know I heard comments during this referendum process that we went through that people feel very uncertain about the wider economy right now, and they just didn't feel like they could vote to commit more money towards, you know, village services, even if they like village services and, and want to maintain them. They just feel like they are in a position where there was a lot of uncertainty. And so what does that look like in a year and a half? You know, we don't know what that climate may, may look like. And then, as I mentioned, tax fatigue, you know, and receptiveness for voters and, and some of the things that have happened over the last few years. The second option I had in there was more to the, to the strategic planning part of this. And so this is kind of maybe taking a pause and, and saying, let's really think about what it is we're here to do. Defining our mission, our vision, what values guide these decisions that we're talking about. You know, this is, in terms of talking about, how do you kind of put your arms around these sort of big issues? This is a process that can kind of help with that. It gives you more information and data to help answer how we approach these challenges. But the, the important thing here, though, is it doesn't make your decision for you. So at the end of all of it, you still have to make a decision, right? So, you know, the bottom bullet point I have here about risk of delay, sometimes it's, it uses an excuse to just kind of kick the can down the road, right? To avoid responsibilities. Oh, we'll go through this process, that'll give us some time, we don't have to make a decision. But then at the end of it, you're gonna be sort of in the same spot. You might have more information to help you make that decision, but you're still gonna be judging different values and things like that, still. So some things to think about for this in terms of what is kind of, what are we talking about when we talk about strategic planning? So this is, you know, we've done very sort of tactical strategic plans where they're very focused on task, what tasks we want to do, tasks we want to complete. This would be much more assessing the organization, right? So we're looking at, what is our identity? And how does that align with what we're doing from an operational standpoint? So we're looking at our environment, we're looking internally, we're looking externally. I would suggest significant public engagement process, pretty in-depth data analysis, you know, having those things inform goal-setting, and then informing action-planning. I would suggest consultant engagement, you know, somebody that can help facilitate that for you and has the time to facilitate that for you in a good way. And that's probably gonna be a big cost. I wouldn't doubt if we were in the six digits or more when it's all said and done, if we want to do this in a, a meaningful way. And it'll take time. You know, it's not something that's gonna happen tomorrow. It's gonna take one to two years to do this in a way that actually produces something valuable that you can use for your decision-making. Challenge with strategic plans in government settings, especially local government settings, things change fast, right? So you go through this process, it's intended to be sort of sustainable, it's intended to be sort of long-term. But we have elections every year, and half of you are up for election every year. And so the board can change very rapidly. And in fact, it has, you know, in recent history. We've had three village presidents in the last four years. We've had 14 different village trustees in the last four years. And combined, that makes for eight different compositions of the Village Board in the last four years. So when your, the composition of your board is changing twice a year, things can change pretty fast. And so you've done all this work to develop this plan, and somebody might have run against this plan and got elected, and then it's scrapped, just like that. So there's a, a balance of resources versus value in something like this. And there's, there's some duplicative things that happen within local government, at least in Wisconsin, where we have like our comprehensive plan. That's a state mandate, we have to have that. That's a little bit more on community visioning in terms of like growth and land use and things like that. But there is, there's some overlap, there's definite, definitely overlap in, in strategic planning. And so is there gonna have to be some reconciling with some inconsistencies, inconsistencies there? And the comprehensive plan has legal weight. We have to do, we have to make certain decisions consistent with that plan, especially land use, zoning decisions, that sort of thing. And as I mentioned, risk of delay. And so, you know, kicking the can down the road, trying to avoid responsibility, those problems are still gonna be there even when you have all of this information. And then the last option I had in there was, look, let's just act, right? We need to implement some decisions now. We need to make decisions on resources and reallocating resources. You know, doing this, you know, immediately or within, within the short term. You know, certainly aligning what we, we saw in the referendum decision that was made by voters. And then within the constraints that we have in our capacity. Some things to think about here as far as just this option in general. Look, the referendum defeat was definitive. I mean, it was, it was overwhelming, right? I mean, it was, when you take the voted no plus voting age population that didn't take the time to vote yes, that's a third of the voting, three fourths of the voting population either said no or didn't care enough to say yes. And so that's a signal, right? I mean, there's no better way to get public feedback than an election, a referendum. You know, that's a signal that something needs to adjust from what is being done. And as I mentioned before, you know, the, the service levels that we have, the initiatives that are taking place, you know, that may exceed what residents expect, it may exceed their expectation to, or willingness to fund it, or it may be a combination of those two things that's going on. And so, you know, this really, this option really puts accountability right back into your plates as a board, you know? Okay, we heard you, we're going to make decisions, we're going to reallocate resources, we're going to do it quickly. We're not going to use the resources that it might take to do these other options. Where it's going to be, we're going to do it in a very efficient manner. You know, what that might look like, again, from a suggestion standpoint, in terms of a process, it may look a little bit like a strategic planning process in some respects. Bringing together an inventory of village services and programs for you to review. Board discussing what's essential, what's non-essential, and then prioritizing based on, you know, what the community expects, what it needs, and then just evaluating that in the context of, look, this is just the capacity that we have in order to be able to do some of those things. And so at the end of that, you know, that's hopefully making informed decisions that either, you know, enhance maybe some services. So there's probably some things that we want to make sure that we are doing well and exceeding at, making sure they have the resources to do that. Maybe some things need to just be simply maintained where they're at. But some things maybe need to be reduced and some things maybe need to be completely eliminated. And so, you know, my advice, you know, I had some of these things in the memo that I had. You know, this is challenging, but this is the job, right? I mean, there's nothing more fundamental about your position and what you're doing as an elective official than addressing these challenges, making value, deciding what the values are and aligning those with capacity and expert advice. So this is, this is fundamentally what you're here to do. And one of the things I mentioned too in the memo was, you know, when we try to, you know, it's nice to say yes to, you know, people who have ideas and things that we want to do, but there's a discreet choice that's happening, there's a sort of implicit choice that's happening when we say yes to things. We're, we're, we're risking failing at something that we need to do, right? There's a, there's a discreet resource allocation that's happening where we said yes to you, but something has to happen in order for that yes to be operationalized. And so we're taking, maybe it's staff time, it's a dollar here, a dollar there. It's taking focus from, you know, quality of time. So understanding that, yes, it's nice to say yes, but we're, we're saying no discreetly in some other way. And, you know, for me, in, you know, doing this 15 years across five different communities, you know, there's some fundamentals here that just never go away, right? It's especially when faced with challenges like this, it's, you know, what is essential? What are the core municipal responsibilities that we have? What are things that we do that simply nobody else can do? You know, public safety, of course, infrastructure, of course, governance, things like elections, you know? These are things that nobody else can do but us and that's fundamentally why we're here as a, as a government. And we should make sure that we're doing those things well and that we're, we're exceeding at those things. Pause and retiring non-essential functions. So, you know, what are things that aren't essential from, you know, that purpose, that kind of core mandate that we have as a government? You know, can we take things from those things and make sure that we're doing those essential things? And, you know, that may look like, as I mentioned before, maybe we're simply just maintaining some of those things as is. Or maybe we're slightly reducing the quality of them or quantity of them. Or maybe we're saying, look, we can't do this anymore. You know, this needs to be something that's not a government responsibility. And then another thing too is just constantly rethinking service delivery. I mean, this is, I think this is built in inherently into local governments in Wisconsin right now based on, you know, the funding dynamics for the last 20 years. Where you constantly have to be thinking in ways of, okay, not only can, how can we do non-essential things maybe differently? But how can we even do essential things maybe a little bit differently? And so that may involve looking at more, you know, specific operational analysis. Is there something that we need to spend some time really thinking about or studying? Is there ways that we can incorporate technology? Is there ways that we can be more efficient? Are there different models that we can try to, to explore in terms of consolidations and things like that? Understanding that, you know, those things need political willpower, right? To see those things through when we, when we explore those things. And you may have to say no to some people in that process. One of the examples I kind of gave in the memo I had, that sort of depicts this in a little bit of a more practical way is looking at like the clerk's department specifically. And this is a pretty rudimentary look at this. There's much more extensive if we spent some time on it, but a very, just a brief look of, you know, what is the, what is the clerk's role? What is the mandated legal obligation of our clerks? Elections, of course, maintaining public records, serving the board in an administrative capacity, especially for meetings, minutes, that sort of thing, licensing and permits. So what is, what is the clerk's department doing? So they're, they're being asked to do public relations and communications, they're being asked to do social media, they're being asked to run the website. The HR functions are a function of clerk's department. We don't have a separate HR department or a professionally trained HR person on our staff. We don't have an IT person on our staff. We have a consultant and the clerk's department manages the consultant. We do things like special event coordination, you know, that takes up time. Broad support for various boards, committees, commissions. You know, we've added a lot of bodies for, over the last four years in terms of committees, boards and commissions. You know, at one time, maybe we were having maybe one or two meetings a week. You know, if you look at our calendar, we're having four or five meetings a week. And staffing has not increased on the clerk's side. And so there's things that happen, you know, that take up time for those meetings. So it's contacting the chair, do you have the agenda? Let's talk about the agenda, do you have the minutes? Do you have the packet information? Do you, okay, now I gotta go publicly notice these things. So I have to go out into the community and post at three different places. I gotta put it on the website, you know? So these things take, you know, in isolation, you know, one more committee. But how much time will that take? Now we've had five, six, seven more community committees. Okay, now we're talking hours of time, right? And so that's discreetly being pulled away from things like core mandated responsibilities. We're asking them to do that, we're saying, we care less, maybe not implicitly, about them being able to do some of these other things, right? So, so we have those things that are happening, we have these kind of expectations that are being put on and so that draws focus. You know, something that we talk about in terms of opportunities, I know Candy and I have talked about this all, you know, all the time really, is just, there's so many ideas and things that we could do from, especially from a technology standpoint, you know, this is just one opportunity. But from a technology standpoint, that could make even the core functions of the position be much more efficient, right? It could free up some time, it could make the way that they're delivered in a more effective manner, and maybe even in a more accountable manner. But there's just no time to do it, right? I mean, they're, they're being pulled away into all these different things. And it takes time to sort of develop these sort of, and implement these solutions and to do it in a, in a good way. And so there's just no resources to do those, those initiatives. And so, you know, this is something, in terms of broader implications, again, this is a pretty rudimentary assessment, but, you know, we could do, we could do something like that. And this, this could be something that could inform any of the three options that I presented in terms of, look, we can do an inventory of some of these things and we can identify these opportunities for, for reallocation and efficiency. And so the, the last thing here, you know, this may look like, you know, there is no, again, this is a complex issue, there's no technical solution, but there may not be any viable direct sort of solution. There may be a series of different kind of solutions that need to be done at the same time or in, in combination with one another. So, you know, the ones that are presented here are not the only ones. You know, you certainly can have other ideas and things like that. They're not mutually exclusive, they can be done, you know, in combination. And, you know, most likely they may have to be done over, you know, several years in, in different ways. And so, you know, an integrated sort of path here, taking sort of all of those solutions is, look for the 2026 budget, you know, one of those three things that we need to think about here is, you know, is there a way that we can pause some things or maintain some things so that, okay, what is, what are the critical needs here so that we can strengthen maybe some of our essential functions? Can we do that right now in the short term? But maybe thinking long-term, maybe we're doing something a little bit more strategic, maybe we're doing some strategic planning that might take some kind of form to kind of help some longer-term direction on some of these decisions. And then, you know, the possibility of a referendum, I think, is always going to be in the future. I think as long as the, the funding arrangement that we have in the state of Wisconsin for local governments is the way it is, it's always going to be something that's going to be cyclical. I mean, it's always going to have to be an option on the plate, especially for sustainably funding core services. You know, at some point, it's, you know, you start to get to some of those fundamental questions about public safety, maintaining infrastructure, good governance, that sort of thing. So, you know, that's me kind of regurgitating the memo that hopefully y'all read. But just kind of going through that so we can have, can be on the same page and folks at home can kind of hear this as well. And so I'll turn it over for y'all for questions or discussion.
Thank you, Martin. That's given us a lot to absorb and think about. Anyone like to begin? Jason?
I'm happy to start. Thank you. So, as I've reflected more and more in the referendum and the response we received and have looked at the different options that Martin has put forward, it, it seems to me that there was no felt need or urgency on behalf of the community's part to support tax increase. And my opinion is, that's because the board has been very proactive along with the staff and seeing here are issues that are coming down the road, which is what the referendum was meant to address. And the, the staff has been fantastic, continues to be in fact fantastic. And like a lot of good staff, overfunctions and has been trying to do all of the things. And as Tom mentioned in a previous meeting, we want to be sure to retain staff and over-functioning staff burnout quickly. So in my mind, we do need to do all of these three things, starting with three, then moving to two, then moving to one. And, and by that, in, in terms of what Martin provided in terms of options, and that's broad strokes, is first of all, I think it's important for us to have conversations with our different departments and staffs about, you know, where, where are we stretched thin? And, and that's not just financially, but where are we stretched thin in terms of person power? In terms of time, I believe it was Lauren who said, it might have been Nick. I, I met with both Lauren and Nick as part of the, in terms of public works, as my role in the public works chair. And they said, we have the same number of public work staff that we had 20 years ago. Which, did I get that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, which, which blew my mind. And yet we still, we have more roads, we have more parks, we have more spaces to mow and we're keeping it up the same way we did 20 years ago at the expense of, of our, our staff. And honestly, the, the amount of time that they have to put in and their wellbeing. So, so look at the, I, I think it's important for us to look at those spaces where we have stretched but not snapped yet and pull back, pull back so we don't snap and pull back so that way the community feels the pressure that the board and our staff feel each and every day because of resources aren't available. And if it continues, we continue to hear the feedback, that's fine. So, so for instance, if we decide, we're, and this is just an example, but we're, we're going to plow differently. And we're going to plow a little bit more like Madison, where if there's, and this has its drawbacks, but, but if there's less than an inch of still, we're going to let it be. And that'll save staff time, that'll save funds. And if the community eventually says, you know what, that's not okay with us, well, that will show up in an option one referendum type thing. And so look for those areas of opportunity that we have right now in, in all of our places. And kind of the, hit the low-hanging fruit first, at the same time doing the strategic planning piece. So that way we're not completely kicking the can down the road. We're making some decisions now, but we're not just making them knee-jerk, we're going to have that strategic planning piece happening. And we know there's going to need, need to be a referendum in the future. When, I, I, I think the, the November 2026 is way too soon and there's too much for us to do before that. But, but those are my initial thoughts of all of my scribbled notes that I've got. So I figured that's a place to start.
I think Tim had his hand up.
I did, yes. Lots of thoughts, a little bit disjointed. First of all, thank you for the memo. One of your best, actually, I think it was outstanding recap of our situation. Didn't make me feel any better, but thank you for it. I, I kind of agree with what Jason's saying about, you know, going back to referendum in the next couple of years. I'm not real optimistic that it would be successful. One of the benefits of a November election referendum is the higher turnover, turnout. But we had really high turnout with this election. And in fact, almost everybody who turned out voted in the referendum. There were very few people who didn't vote. I think there were only 182 ballots that didn't vote one way or the other. So I think the referendum actually generated turnout where people came out just to vote against it. And so I'm not real optimistic that'll be different. Now, maybe some of the motivations behind it around the uncertainty will be different in another year or two, but I, I feel like that's a path we could find ourselves pretty far down and it's still a losing path and not get anywhere. The second real concern I have with figuring out what the community values and what it doesn't is that, from my point of view, this community isn't great at sharing proactively their opinion of what they value. And if you look at a lot of different things we've done over the years, the community input has all come very late in the process. We'll have multiple meetings where we ask for input, whether it was the chicken keeping ordinance or JCPark or even this referendum where we ask for input, hear very little and then all of a sudden, as we're implementing, even our strategic plans, we're implementing after multiple public meetings and suddenly the room is full of people who have questions, complaints and concerns about it. And so it's really difficult to get this community to share proactively what they value and what they don't. And so I think there's a degree to which we're just going to have to make some hard decisions and implement those decisions. I think as we look for ways to cut costs, we should also be looking for ways to cut deep enough to afford some of the things we had in the referendum. And, you know, I think the, the staff we have that's underpaid is, is a potential issue that we need to see if we can find a solution to. I think the police officers we were looking for, we should be looking for ways to still add them if we can find other costs. The other thing is, are there other revenue sources we can attack? And one kind of half-baked, harebrained idea I had was, at the DCCVA village meeting last week, Dave Burgland from Brooklyn was talking about how expensive their contract with the Dane County Sheriff's Office is. Are there options to provide police services to other communities in a way that help us staff our department, generating additional revenue? revenue? I don't know, maybe that's a crazy idea. The other thought I had was, should we be looking at selling off some of our parkland? We have more parks than most of the communities around us. Should we sell some of that and develop that land and no longer have to maintain it? And plus, you know, potentially get some revenue back for it. I don't know if we have data on what parks don't get used much, or if we have parks that are particularly more expensive to maintain because of whatever their features are. But I do think that if we're expecting at some point, we're going to be in a referendum situation again, I think 2026 is too soon, but if it's 28, 29, there probably is going to have to have been some cuts to service that people want to see restored. And so, the only other thought I have is that as we, as we go through this process of strategically deciding what to add, what to subtract, I think we should probably establish what our values as a village are. What are the things we want to provide to the community? And get some agreement around that. So that might be another step in the process.
Amanda and then Tom.
Okay. I totally agree with Jason and Tim about the referendum. I think people are never going to vote for a referendum until the economy is better because they just don't have the money. I think that's, that's the biggest function, biggest reason why it failed is people don't have the money. They're being squeezed. And I don't see that changing before November 2026. So, I, while I'm not going to say absolutely not, we're not doing it. I think that's more of a back burner thing. Maybe in six months, we see where we're at. But I, I don't think we should prioritize that at all. I feel like, two, options two and three are much better ideas. The only thing, you know, I, I appreciate your outside the box thinking, Tim, you know, some of your ideas are, they're, they're different and, no, they're, they're worthy. They're worthy of discussion, doesn't mean I agree or whatever. Like at first, you know, when you say things like sell off some parkland, make me go, what? We can't do that. But then, you know, we have to calm down. We've got to, I'm, I'm open to discussion of the items. But you're absolutely right. Values first. I think we need to maybe make a list of, you know, what, what services does government have to provide? What government, you know, what, what do we, you know, needs and wants, for sure. The only other thing that occurred to me hearing ideas about, you know, letting an inch of snow stay on the roadways or whatever, that I could see being, you know, an option, something we talk about. I see us shaving, like the little savings here, little savings there. I don't know that we can have a big chunk come from somewhere. It's going to be a lot of smaller savings that maybe will add up to hiring somebody to help staff. But I can't guarantee that, you know, like, we don't, we don't know at this point. But what occurred to me is, you know, if we're going to shave here and there, we have to make sure that those savings, small savings now, don't add up to more expense later. Like if we just decide we're only going to fill half the potholes, that's going to be a much bigger expense later to fix it when we have money. And so, we need to be careful that, that we're, we're saving in ways that don't cost us more money down the road because that doesn't solve the problem. So, those are my two cents.
Tom?
Thank you.
Well said. And again, there's a lot of good things here that I'm agreeing with, I guess, some additional thoughts and relationship to a referendum and going to that again in November. I, you know, there, one of the, I guess, one of the lessons I came away with from this past referendum experience was just being on the village board changes you. You're informed, you know what's going on. Even the people here tonight, the people who may be listening or listening to a recording or, or hearing this in any other way, are not our typical village resident. Our typical village resident doesn't go to the parks, hasn't been to the library, doesn't go to the senior center, hasn't been to a Christmas tree lighting ceremony, they haven't been to a band concert. They, they simply go to the poll and they see an issue for them, and it says $40 a month more, or $400 a month more, Tim, and they just, they just say no. It's, they're not, they don't have any, any connection to what's really going on. Just, just being on the village board, you become more informed. I, I view the world very differently now than I did before I was a village trustee. I think that the, we did a really great job in communicating, but you, we're never going to get to 100% or a solid majority of people who are really going to get educated about the need until there's some other motivator, some other driver that's going to make them aware of it. So I guess, for me, you're going to, it's going to take a lot of convincing before I say we should have another referendum. When we talk about a million dollars and we're spending the kind of money we have to do for communication and distribution, I'm going like, what's, what's the return on investment here? I'm not, I'm not seeing, as that number gets smaller and smaller and the work to get it, to get there gets greater and greater, it just sort of, oh, that's, we'd be better off spending that money just filling the potholes, that, you know, that particular occasion. I think we do have to have a good focus on our, where we're going and what we're doing and understanding our values. It's going to be difficult because this, it is a dynamic, the, the dynamic of change that's always going on and the people who are addressing it are going to come in with different perspectives. So it's very difficult to establish a long-term vision, a long-term strategy, when this next month, somebody else gets on the board and they have a different perspective. So it's, it's very difficult to have that in a long term. So, in business, we would be able to project out, well, a strategic plan, that's five, 10, 10 years. And if you're doing something that's two years, that's a tactical plan. I mean, we've been working and very much living in a tactical world for a long time. And there isn't a real long strategic. I, I'd like to go through the exercise. I would appreciate having that. But even that's not going to be cast on stone. I, I think the big thing is, is to find those edges and find those corners. And yeah, there's going to be some things that are going to have to be set aside that we all value. And I think that starts in, and I think it was the second process that Martin outlined. So, I think that's kind of where I'm seeing things kind of have to go, is we're going to have to kind of sit down and, and look, look through. I like the idea of technology, creating greater efficiencies. That appeals to me because that has a long term, that's a longer term solution. I'm, I'm a little hesitant when I start seeing short-term solutions. So.
Lynn?
I feel like we're probably all going to speak at this point, so. Okay. Yes, to all of what's being said. I think it's important to remember, mostly for people who are here watching, but also just for us, to remember that we serve two constituencies. We serve a constituency of residents who chose to live here and choose to be here every day, and I'm so grateful for that. But I also serve a constituency that sits on the side of this room, and an even larger constituency that doesn't come to our board meetings. And that's our village staff. And I have to listen to their voices because our residents don't have the opportunity to listen to their voices. And their voices are often telling us that they're tired, that they're burnt out, that they're doing a lot. Our residents don't necessarily have the time or space to listen to that. But my job as a village board member is to, to hear those, those concerns and to honor those concerns. And so I think it's important that we realize that when we talk about services, our services come from people, right? They don't come from machines. So when we talk about public safety, we're talking about individuals that get up every day and put on a uniform and, and go on shift. When we talk about the clerk's office, we talk about actual clerks who come every day and answer questions about the elections. And so, I think it's really important to understand that when we talk about cutting services, we're, or adding services, or adjusting services, we're also talking about people. And I want to keep bringing that back to that point because sometimes I think that can get lost in the shuffle. As far as the referendum, yeah, I agree that I don't think it's as a viable option, not necessarily because of the economy. I'll differ on my thought on that. I think it's really because the community is waiting for, for this board to act, regardless of who is on this board. I think that what I heard coming out of the referendum was, I don't really want to give you more money because I, I want you to, to be more creative with the money that you have. Now, how creative we can get on that, not quite sure. But I do think that there's something to be said for the fact that if I go back to my community and ask them for another referendum, I want to stand in front of them and say, I tried my best. I did every possible thing I could do to make adjustments, and yet I am still here, right? So, I would rather really exhaust some of the other options before we head to referendum. I also have learned, just as Tom mentioned, a lot being on the board, in that some of my grand ideas that I think of in the middle of the night are not always so grand when I align them to expertise such as Martin, or Lauren, or Rachel, or Chief, when they kindly tell me, well, that's a great idea, but, and they kind of help me back to reality. So I really think that before we start entertaining all sorts of really interesting, creative, grand ideas, which totally four, that we get a little bit of expertise from the people that we need and that we utilize in order to help us frame a little bit of some of the creative financial decisions we could make. I think it would save us a little time, and maybe you guys a little time by giving us a little bit of direction. I don't want that to come from any specific individual. I don't want anyone on this staff to feel as if they are responsible. Again, it falls at our feet. It's a decision we need to make. But I could use a little bit of guidance as to what would be a smart choice and what would not be a smart choice. In addition, I also would love to see sort of some initial decisions made by us, but then also taking some of those options out to the community. Because while I agree with you, Tim, that our community is often kind of a ninth inning feedback entity, I also think sometimes they don't necessarily know what feedback to give, right? If, if I go to a constituent or resident and say, what do you want to cut? Well, I can get 11,000 different answers. If I provide a list of out of these options, what are you willing to go without? I think that frames the discussion a little bit better. And so, while I think that the board needs to make some decisions, I also think that down the road later this year, maybe next year, having some strategic listening sessions framed around some very specific service adjustments might be useful. And then my last point, I will get to the last point, I'm so sorry. I often think about this issue sort of as in sort of a household budget crisis, right? Your, your costs are outgoing your, your income. As a family who's currently paying childcare, somewhat aware of that. And, you know, you do two things. You cut your costs, right? You clip a couple coupons, you don't go on that vacation, you, you do the thing. But then, you also look at it on the other aspect of, you know, do we get a different job? Do we get more income? Do we take a side hustle? Do we do something like that? And while I think that our village has done a fantastic job of finding some creative ways of gaining some funds, I also think that the commercial growth is something that we do have to really, you know, invest in a bit. And I think that comes down to a little bit of the strategic planning. I think that that might be something we want to think about in, in allowing for, what do we need to adjust so that our staff has some time to reach out to, to developers, reach out to future commercial businesses? You know, what are some of our very limited options in, in getting some commercial growth here so that we can hopefully alleviate a little bit of the burden on residents? So, a little bit of doing both things at once, it's very tricky, but I think that that should also be part of the narrative or the conversation we have. Okay, I'm done. Okay. I agree with so many things that I've heard. Yeah, I would just say the referendum should completely be taken off the list. I think that if we were to do that in 2026, it truly shows we're not listening to voters. And then to tee up the strategic listening sessions, I, I would highly encourage, encourage those that are listening to even encourage your neighbors, because, right, we've talked about the people that are here are awesome, or watching the recording. But I, I encourage you, if you haven't, to visit the library, to visit the senior center, to go to a village event, to share, to get some of those experiences. Do a ride along. I did that. I came back, I've learned so much already being on the board, as we've talked about. And then I would like to remind those two watching that what is said on Facebook or social media doesn't get your voice truly heard or a response. Like, please email us, or please attend those sessions that we do have. That allows us to, to hear your voice. So, that's all I was going to add.
Pardon me. Sorry. Jason?
It doesn't all just stick in your head, you have to take notes?
Well, many years ago, it did.
One, one challenge I have, in shortcoming, I see with, what, one challenge I see with, I think listening sessions should be an important part of this. I don't think we're going to truly get what the community cares about and hear about what the community cares about until something changes that affects them personally. And it has to affect people enough personally that they're going to want to pay more. And so, as we're looking at making cuts, and I, I agree with Amanda, there's nothing that we can cut like a chunk off of there, because we, the village board and village staff has done such a great job of being slim since the horrible law that changed funding for municipalities, that, that we're lean in providing the things that are needed, are, are very essential to communities. So, so we're going to, as we shave, we're going to hit a point that's sensitive. And I think that's when we are going to hear as a board at a listening session, for instance. And we're going to need to have the strength of character as a board to say, you know what, we hear you. We do not have the funds or the staffing to do anymore. And, and we're going to have to be honest enough to say it out loud and long enough for people to understand the crunch that our staff and the board has been under, under. And until I feel it personally, I'm, I'm probably not going to want to give a penny. Because I will say, people who are on this board, who are here in the audience, who watch on YouTube, are weird, in a good way, that, that they're invested and are willing to take free time to do this and to understand things. And we're sacrificing things to do that. We all know this. Other people aren't worse for not sacrificing that time. They just don't have the space or the capacity in their lives. And until, until it hurts a little bit, and I'm, I'm not saying excessive pain, but hey, you know, I really would love the lawn cut a little bit more across the street from my house in that part. So, so I wanted to make that point. In terms of a process, let, let me suggest, what if we, I mean, we have committees for a reason, and we don't have to figure everything out here at the board table. In fact, we've got things segmented in wonderful ways that we all work on. If we were to go back to the committees and staff we relate to and come back to the board with suggestions for immediate cost savings and ways that we can save staff time, and then, whether it's at a regular board meeting or at a special board meeting, we come and look at that comprehensively and see what that saves us. We, not, not just looking at it bits, but say, you know what, over the next two, three months, we're going to look at all the pieces, have all of the conversations, and come back with suggestions and see what that savings looks like. At the same time, begin working on that strategic prioritization. At the same time, begin working on that strategic prioritization process and saying, what what are we really about as a community? What are non-negotiables and and what is the priority priority order? And doing a both and at the same time. And then hopefully, we will be in a place where we're in a a tolerable place for the next four years. And if things get too challenging for residents, it'll actually be the residents saying, we need a referendum in 2029, 2028, and not the village board going, oh, oh, we could see that we could use these funds in the next year. So that that's my initial thought.
I'd like to just make one point to kind of rebut or to offer a different approach to thinking that some of us have had. We've talked a lot about this idea of, you know, kind of shaving around the edges, making small cuts here and there. I'm not as in favor of that approach, and my reasoning is, I feel like, number one, we've done a lot of that already. Over the last 10 years, we've done a lot of nibbling and cutting where we can. There isn't a lot of fat to be cut. There isn't a lot of low-hanging fruit at this point. It's, you know, the referendum we put out there was looking for $2 million. And shaving around the edges is not going to find $2 million. And so to my way of thinking, if we're going to make changes, they're gonna have to really be transformative, and we're gonna have to make decisions about things we're just not gonna do anymore. And those are gonna be really challenging to think about. But I think the only way we're gonna solve this issue is with a broader approach to it from a financial standpoint and really have to think about not doing some things anymore.
Glenn, please.
Yeah, I would agree. I also think, while I love the idea of using committees, that's a cost. We have to put our committees together. I mean, Martin, you kind of explained this, right? That committees are costly. And at the end of the day, I think what it comes down to is we would go to a committee hearing and ask our village staff, what Martin can probably ask them directly anyway, and then have that be brought to us. I could be completely, I mean, wrong on that. I I think I just, when it comes to making the list or getting an idea of some of the ideas we want to contemplate, I want to be as efficient as possible on that because I think it's one of those things where it's not gonna be fun or pretty or enjoyable in any way. And I don't want to belabor it any more than we need to. But that's just my opinion.
All right, Chase.
So I hear you. I I respectfully disagree because we do not, as a village board, have the internal knowledge to say, this is what we're going to do without staff input. And the committees also are a place to have those conversations and figure out, oh, that was a really bad idea. I'm glad we talked about that at committee versus bringing it to the whole village board as a possibility and spending an hour and a half on one idea. And for instance, I I I don't, I hear also, I'm gonna shift to Tim for a second. I cannot figure out for the life of me what we do as a village that we're just not gonna do anymore. There there is a certain social contract that's implicit in our community that has to do with public safety, about parks, about caring for seniors. I know this is out outside of our realm, but, you know, schooling and education, libraries that are fundamental to who this community is and what we expect. And I'm willing to, and every department I look at that we have, we don't even have a recreation department, that we could say, we can cut back on our, we don't have one of those. We don't have the, so so we're we're gonna say, okay, what arm are we going to cut off? And I don't see that as being feasible. I also don't think this is something that we can just decide sitting here at a board. I think smaller conversations and having a larger conversation and taking the time to have those conversations in committee and then coming to the village board, even though it may not be as efficient in terms of time, it will be more efficient in terms of ideas. I I'm not trying to get the fastest way from point A to B. I I'm trying to get the the I don't have a great word. This isn't that, the the maybe wisest way there, which is going to come through many voices.
I guess I'm sort of like between the. I guess what I would see as a process is is Martin pulls the staff and they they gather the ideas and those get distributed to the committee for refinements and so forth. So it's sort of a, rather than going through committees to it, going to the board and then then out to the committees for for additional refinements or something. I think one of the things that has come up was, and we mentioned, somebody mentioned the mowing plan along the way, I think you did it. You know, we may wind up with a lot of prairies and we don't mow anymore, or, you know, and we know that will get a reaction because that certainly gets a reaction every time. It's it's finding a way, and I guess I'm not, I don't want to get caught up in the process right now. I'm I I think I'm willing to talk about how that would work and how that, but we've got to have a way to find those opportunities to say, you know, and it goes back to, you know, the example that he provided, that that Martin provided on the clerk's office. There's there's stuff we're doing, or stuff our staff is doing, and there's stuff our staff loves to do because it feels good to do those things. It feels good to plan the events. It feels good to 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 answer the phone and give you know, quick and honest answers quickly. You know, that may not be the best level of service, but if there's a technology that could be provided, you punch a bunch of numbers and you get a an answer to something. I don't know, and there's things out there that we're gonna have to take on. I guess I just don't see us having a a nice process here that's gonna work easily. And I I guess it works better as we did with the referendum where we go, what's what's the possible needs that we have for a long term? And then working backwards from that, what's the opportunities that we have? I mean, I I don't even know that we could sit in a committee and come up with the technologies that we might employ at a at a particular time. So I guess it's a start kind of the other way around. And so I would start with the whole board working on it, and then as ideas develop, push those into the committees if if necessary for further for further work.
So you're saying I had it backwards, which is not unusual.
Well, I'm I'm just, I'm just saying that there's more, it'll be more than one just process. You know, we're, this is gonna take some iteration. All that iteration doesn't have to happen at the board level. Provide some opportunity for some other kinds of things. I think there are some shorter term things that, when we talk about a lot of this stuff, we're talking about stuff that's gonna take a year or a year and a half. I mean, there are some other things that, you know, we we, what are we gonna do with the old village hall? That's still floating out there. There's a revenue opportunity that we could turn that back into a a tax-based, something that actually pays us some income kind of thing off of taxes. You know, that's that's something we probably should be looking at. There's other things along the way that that we could take some shorter term things on, but need to get some things and some actions start kind of started in relationship to it.
Yeah, how many, what what's the number, I guess, of departments that the village has? I mean, I'm trying to think, you know, you got public safety.
So we have. So we have, I guess you could say we have eight, eight departments. If you consider administration, a department of one as a department with a deputy who is also the clerk. So administration, clerk, finance, community development, senior center, and the police department, and then the library, which is a little bit of a different anomaly with their makeup and their governing body, but for all intents and purposes, a village department.
Okay, well.
It public works. I'm sorry, Lawrence. Thank you. Yes, public works as well.
We're making big changes, Lawrence.
So so the reason I ask this is because I I have an idea that might seem a little crazy. I'm just gonna throw it out there for discussion. But I'm trying to, you know, figure out a way that would, that we can get staff feedback that isn't gonna take too much time away from them, that would be quicker than committee work, that kind of thing. And I'm wondering if each of us could sort of adopt a department head or a department that we could do a deep dive into and like shadow somebody for the day or try to like get, I pick their brain, like, like, pick a department, check it out, see, get get feedback, see, like, and come up with a list of things that that we could look at to change. And then we all come back and we think we can have a big meeting, but that way we're not taking committee time with lots of different people all in the same room and note-taking and all this formality. We're doing our homework and research and bringing it back to the board for a discussion again. Just an idea.
Looks like Glenn.
I love it. How do we pick which department we get to adopt?
I don't know.
I'm getting ahead of myself. But I I agree. I think that that's a very smart idea. I would be, I wonder if, and again, I want to be very careful to ask this question, Martin, because I think that the beginning of your presentation is very helpful here, which is that this is a decision we need to make. We can't put this on on you or anybody else. What are your thoughts about something like that? Do you feel like that is worthwhile? Or could you kind of weigh in a little bit on this discussion?
Yeah, yeah, let me. Let me talk a little bit more abstract. I I guess, you know, this is this is really good. So when we talked about kind of the interplay between, you know, your role and sort of our role, this is really helpful. So, you know, this is, you know, starting to get into sort of, okay, now, you know, we've had this conversation, you know, and we've had this discussion about some of the ways that we want to approach this. And so this is sort of where I can kind of come into this and be a little bit of the oracle of like, okay, this is what I'm hearing. Now, how can we operationalize, you know, this thing that we're talking about? And so I guess what I, you know, in listening to all of this, what I would propose is, you know, not not making any sort of definitive kind of tactical decisions right now, right? I mean, let's not do that in this moment. I think what would be helpful is for, you know, myself and department heads to kind of come back, knowing what we've heard, and then put some kind of plan in front of you, some some ways to basically operationalize, you know, the process of what we're kind of hearing. And I'll say, I mean, I guess what I'm sort of hearing is generally is, if we're looking at those three options that I gave, it's a little bit of a three, two, one approach where is there at least some short-term thing that we want to do to address critical need? And we can do that as part of probably the 2026 budget. So there's probably some decisions that we can make that, you know, first of all, identifying, you know, what is maybe one thing in in each department that is just a critical thing that need, we really need this to be addressed? And it would be great if we could get it addressed in this budget. What are those things? And then do we have the capacity to maybe reduce or eliminate or and make, you know, some of those decisions to kind of surge those resources to those things so that we can at least provide some alleviation here in the short term operationally? And then beyond that, there's maybe some sort of strategic planning thing that we want to, sounds like we want to engage in. Now, what, you know, what that looks like and the scale of it, I think we still should should talk about that a little bit more. And we don't, you know, need to talk about that, you know, necessarily tonight. We can talk about it as we as we go here over the next couple of couple of months or coming months. But there's something more long-term, some sort of long game, you know, term engagement, engage process that we want to take. And then referendum is kind of sort of the out option. We want to do some of these things and then do that farther out. And I would, I would tend to agree, you know, based on, you know, what it sounds like the appetite is, is, you know, if the referendum is not something we want to return to right away and do in the short term, we 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 probably need to accept that that is going to be a farther out thing in terms of five, six plus years. And I always say that because, you know, there's some other important policy decisions that need to be made in terms of the senior center project, right? If that is a priority, as I said, it's probably something we just need to do because we have identified that as a need. And if we do that, yeah, that's gonna be high profile and it's gonna cost money. And so, you know, we heard that feedback in the referendum, right, about the library, village hall, that sort of thing. You know, so there's going to be a perception, a continued perception of we're doing these things that are spending money, right? And so we're gonna have to get beyond those things, right? We're going to have to make some tough choices about some high-profile costs. And then we need to figure out, you know, where can we get beyond that and to the point where, you know, maybe that's behind us and now we can focus on the operating side. So I think, you know, there's an interplay there between, you know, the PR of things and making some tough decisions on the capital side and then making some decisions on the operational side that, you know, no matter how much we try to explain the differences of those pieces, you can't escape it. And so, you know, there may be some of those things that we need to figure out, what are those things? And let's decide on those things and let's move forward with those things because we just need to do them. And then we're gonna, you know, do what we need to do in the short term as far as addressing critical needs. Then maybe doing some strategic planning, and then we may get out four, five, six years. And now it's, we did some tough choices. We made some changes. And now we're getting to a point again where, you know, now we're cutting the arm off, basically. And so, you know, maybe people will start to feel it that at that point, and we may start to hear some of that feedback. And that will help inform, you know, a possible referendum at that point. A couple other things I just wanted to mention, just hearing the the conversation. Paige brought up a point about social media. That was a conversation I actually had with the Mueller folks about social media during the referendum process. And on my own curiosity, I was like, what was your impression? I mean, you do these referendums with municipal clients all over the state. You do a lot of them. You know, what's your impression about the impact of of that? And, you know, it's like, was there anything unique about Oregon? And their reaction was Oregon was unique in the sense of how benign it was, actually. The usually they see significantly more social media activity, and it's usually much more mean-spirited. You know, what they observed was, you know, people that just disagreed with it, didn't want it to happen. But there wasn't any sort of malice necessarily behind it. It was just, we disagree, or we don't think we need that. And so they, yeah, they they their comment was amongst their teams. They, that was sort of an ongoing theme of like, Oregon is really sort of low-key in the social media world for them. So I just thought I'd share that tidbit with everybody. But I I guess, and if you want to continue your conversation, I guess, you know, my thought here is, you know, based on what we've heard, I think, you know, the staff, we can come together and we can talk about what we heard. And I think maybe it would be helpful to put into words what we heard and then help create a process that might, a feasible process that might be helpful towards putting that into motion. And, you know, we can come back and you guys can have something to kind of react to and maybe work around the edges of.
I just have a question. Based on what you just said, it's still sort of falling on staff to, and you and, you know, people to 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 come up with ideas and synthesize stuff. And what we're hearing is, you know, you guys already have a lot to do. So my question is, how can the board help you? What can we take off your plate? Do you need us to volunteer to answer phones for a couple hours, you know, on a day or whatever? Like, what, how how can we help? Because we just sit here and we listen, we make decisions and have discussions. But like, we're trying to take more off your plate, and this sounds like you're taking it back on your plate.
Well, and that's, I mean, when you want to try to operationalize this. Well, and that's, I mean, when you want to try to operationalize this inevitably, we have to be. I mean, we have to be involved. And we, and, and also keep in mind, you have to execute these decisions collectively, right? So, um, you know, the idea of, you know, going into departments, you know, maybe that's something that we do, but we should talk about what that actually looks like. Let's be in agreement on what are we trying to achieve in this process? Because you might come back with some way different focus and lens than, you know, maybe Tim comes back with. And then it's like, how do we, how do we actually like align all of this different perspective that we had? Same thing with the committees, you know? We need to be fair to them too, you know? Obviously village board committees, the standing committees, that's made up of all of you, it's a little different, you know, you obviously are all having these conversations. But if we're talking about, you know, involving park board or plan commission or some of these other bodies, we need to be fair to them. You know, we, you know, hey, the board said they want you to come up with ideas, you know? Okay, what is, what does success look like there? You know, what are, what are we trying to do here? And so they're not really necessarily in a position to really know, you know, some of those things. They have their areas of interest. And so if we do something like that, which I don't think is necessarily a bad idea, I think, I think it may actually have to be part of, you know, something at some point. But we just need to talk about expectations and the board collectively needs to agree on those expectations before kind of going scatter everywhere. And then we come back and, what were we trying to do? This, this doesn't match what I thought we were trying to do. So I think, you know, again, I think this has been, you know, really helpful for kind of shaping, you know, what my role here is, is to kind of take your policy direction and try to operationalize it. And so I think, you know, I've heard quite a bit and, um, you know, I think now it's just a matter of, did we hear it correctly? And now is it, now that it's in front of you and maybe listed out in a way, um, is that what we can all, that you all can collectively agree on to move forward with?
I guess that's right, Phil left. Okay, I saw Jason first and then Paige and Tim.
So first of all, I appreciate that, Martin, and I'm glad, um, you, you're able to synthesize through all of this, um, a, a way forward, um, that, that we can take action on as a board, uh, at least can be presented on, presented to the board and have us, uh, take action on in terms of the tactical stuff. And, and this is, in my mind, option three stuff. I, I am really curious about everybody else's opinion on option two as well, the strategic and how we're going to move forward strategically and if we're gonna try and find that way ourselves or if we're gonna bring someone else in. And basically, um, strategically, not only what are our priorities, but I, I, I think, Lynn, you, you hit on something fantastic, um, that I, is still hugely important to me is, uh, commercial and industrial development. And that's not going to be a short-term fix. That's something that's going to help 10, 15 years down the road. Epic, um, helped Verona, not immediately, but just ask anybody in Verona. And, and I will add to that list, multifamily development is, continues to be a huge need in terms of not only, um, sustainability, um, in terms of the environment, but sustainability financially. And then Martin, um, men- mentioned something that's still of importance to me is I don't want to kick capital projects down the road to become a problem for a different board, um, to become an expensive for a different board. That's how we've ended up. And I'm not criticizing the decisions of previous boards, but they stack up and they become a problem. Um, and so I think it's important for us to have that conversation as a board. A facilitator never hurts, um, usually helps quite a bit. Um, and then allowing the community also to come in, um, those who are proactive, um, and want to have their voices heard to help, help give us some guidance as well, I think is going to be really important.
Yeah, and I would say even Epic has impacted Oregon, but anyway. Um, um, and I agree, I don't want to kick this down to future problems. Um, but I was just gonna go back to what Martin was saying and I wanted to add, when we're thinking about these, I would love to hear like, what are things we can stop doing is kind of how I word it with like my day job. And if there's a possible estimated of cost savings, because I may not have any idea, right? Like if you could ballpark for me, that would be awesome. That's all I was gonna add.
I was actually just gonna say that we all got a chance to talk here and I'm just wondering, Phil, if you have thoughts?
Thank you, Tim. I believe that we're going, unless the state funding mechanism changes, we will at some point need to go back to a referendum, I believe. So I would, I'd see that we would proceed as though that's probably going to happen someday, yet manage our limited resources as though that doesn't pass. Excuse me. This means we must preserve our cash and fund balance, assuming operating revenues will be scarce, if for no other reason to make sure the staff is adequately compensated. Excuse me. So we have a twofold task, reduce costs and make those efforts, efforts to decrease those expenditures evident to our residents so they can see that we have actually taken steps to reduce cost. If we do so, and residents can see that we have made adjustments and reduced services, they will see when the referendum does finally come to pass that we do indeed need those revenues. There were some very good points made and, and I, and I couldn't disagree with anyone. I think Jason touched on one that I think is very important. And that is, we need to be able to say no to our residents, to our staff and to each other. Thank you. Amanda and Lynn?
So I guess, yes, totally agree. Great, great comments, Phil. I like, I also want to kind of go back to, um, we talked about, um, putting our values first. And I don't know if that's something we want to talk about today and hash out what those are or if people want time to consider it, but I feel like we should, I, does the board have a mission statement or a, like some, some, something that guides us? I mean, is that in a handbook somewhere? Because I, I don't, I, I feel like maybe we, as a board, we should come up with some sort of statement about what, what we see as the community, you know, values of the community. And that way, whatever, um, staff and Martin come up with for ideas that how it would fit into that in some way. And that way we make sure we're staying on track. So I don't know if we want, like I said, today or later, but I think that's an important step in this.
Yeah, sort of got, going off of that, um, while I think mission statements are useful for organizations, we do have this element of constant change, which I think is really hard. I think it's hard for us to nail down the values of our community because we're only seven people of a very large community and we're very temporary. What I do think though, going off of sort of what Jason was saying, as far as our thoughts on number two, I do think that this discussion is really nuanced in the sense that while we're going to go ask staff to make dis- or make recommendations to us, we also haven't really strategically planned about what we want to do for the next couple of years. And so I almost wonder, as you're asking sort of, can you clarify the ask here a bit for us? Is it worthwhile for us to push pause on the discussion and bring up sort of what's some of the strategic goals that we have for the next few years? Because what if one of our goals is commercial growth, but we don't name that until we get the recommendations and one of the recommendations goes against that, right? Like if we, if we ask staff to give us recommendations on things they can adjust, but yet they don't align to the things that we actually want to do for the next couple of years, we're sort of setting ourselves up for failure? And so I wonder if it does clarify a bit for the, for the staff or departments if we talk a little bit about what, you know, I think last time we met, Martin, you had suggested maybe like five-ish strategic goals that are sort of broader, not so specific as we did last time, but that would sort of help guide departments in making quality recommendations to us that do align to some of the things that at least short-term we're thinking about doing, just that.
Anyone? Okay. I guess, you know, um, I, I'll go through my notes and that might be helpful. Appears that option two and option three, um, are where, where we want to proceed with, with keeping option with the referendum on the table, but, uh, probably a long time. We want to concentrate on basic services and I think Amanda touched on this, no sacred cows. We need to make the difficult decisions and staff can only inform us as to the best options. Is Lynn finding it out? But we need to make the difficult decisions. I think that cuts, oh, Tim, Tim made a good point, I think, is we, we really can't work around the edges, but we need to make significant cuts. So, uh, how would we, how would we like to proceed from here? We're looking for information back from Martin. Do we want to, um, give Martin more direction, staff, et cetera? Jason?
So I'm, I'm gonna make a recommendation based on what I've heard because it's easier to react to something than come up with something whole cloth sometimes.
Yes, right.
So what if, um, so, uh, for, for a starting point, based on what Lynn was just saying, is we work to engage someone to help us through these, the strategic process. I, I, I don't think it's something we should do alone. I, I, I just don't, we can only see so much, we're on the inside. Have someone work us through that strategic process. At the same time, Martin and the staff can be having conversation and working and that at the end of that strategic process, we get the recommendations for the short-term or, or for the more immediate tactical changes and we make our decisions from there. Is that clear?
Yep. Tom?
As you said, it's a starting place. I guess the, the problem on the strategic planning process, um, I think as we talked about in here is, it's a pretty long cycle. It's not something that's going to be done in, in the 2026 budget cycle. And I think what we're talking about with, from the ideas and things that would be coming from Martin would be stuff we're looking at more immediacy on as far as taking actions on, on the 2026 budget. Is that more or less where it was going?
Yeah, I, I think, um, you know, again, based on what I've heard, I think, and, and sort of this is somewhat out of necessity, right, with the, the budget that's coming. You know, there's an alignment here, it sounds like, of, uh, you know, we have to figure out the 26 budget, what kind of direction is, do we need to be informing staff and to be thinking about in terms of putting our budgets together and having those conversations? And so it sounds like in this big ball of whatever challenge, uh, the thing that we need to do there is talk about, um, you know, some of these short-term tactical things. So what is the, you know, finding the areas of critical need? And so that's probably gonna be some kind of staff process, probably is part of the budget process. And that's, you know, in some ways fundamentally part of the process every year. And then, you know, again, making those kind of tactical decisions of what are some things that we, we don't, we're not going to do. We're gonna make a cognizant, cognizant decision of saving some time or perhaps saving some dollars and we're going to move those things, time and hour and dollars, to some areas of very critical need that we can hopefully address in the 2026 budget. And so we can provide some immediate short-term relief, um, for some of the challenges that, that we're facing. And then I think there is, um, a conversation then that's a little bit more longer-term, um, as far as strategic planning. And I think probably the conversation that the board needs to have there is, um, uh, process. So what are, you know, what is the scale of what we're talking about here? Are we talking about something that's, um, you know, kind of at the grand scale that sort of I talked about in the options or is it, um, something a little bit smaller? And as I think Jason or me and Tom or Lynn maybe mentioned was, you know, maybe we just need some, some assistance on that. Maybe we, we need to bring in somebody that can maybe just help us wrap our minds around effective strategic planning and, um, build a process with those, those individuals to kind of help us through that. So that's maybe, you know, that part of it. And then that can help kind of inform the things that happen in the longer term. And again, I, I, you know, I, I don't think that you have to make these sort of decisions right now. And I think from a process and feasibility standpoint, just to, you know, for all of us to know what we're talking about and understanding, I think it's helpful to just have, you know, again, this is my role to play here in all of this is to go back and then, you know, create a plan, right, for you so that what is feasible from what I've heard, what can be done, and then what are the steps moving forward? So I can bring, take that, talk to staff, we can bring that back and we can say, hey, maybe that idea that we talked about, here's some challenges with that idea. Or this idea that we talked about, that's a great idea, we think that's, can fit into this piece right here. And so, again, that can be something where you're reacting to something so that everybody has the same understanding and same expectation rather than, you know, it gets a little funny when we do some of these verbal directions, you know, people hear things differently and remember things differently. And so let's memorialize this conversation and make sure that we all understand everybody.
Okay, so Jason and Martin have outlined, uh, in time, a, a plan to, uh, for short-term, look at staff recommendations for 2026 and consider, uh, and I, I would suspect that after we have the budget in place, we would then consider perhaps engaging some outside expertise. Is that general, we have general consensus on that? And additional, additional thoughts? Amanda, please.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that whatever the expenses of bringing in someone to help, that we are confident that we could find savings beyond that because it sounds bad to be like, let's hire somebody to help us. You know, I, I get the value that somebody like that can bring, but, um, i- if we're pretty confident that it's worth our time and money to do that, then I'm on board. I just, I would want to know that.
Yeah, I, I would envision, you know, what I'm thinking right now is kind of two things. One is there's the short-term thing. I'm thinking of a roadmap of what that looks like and what that process could look like. And I can lay that out. But then the second process is, you know, this sort of longer-term strategic plan thing. And in my mind, what I'm thinking of coming back with is, um, sort of a menu of options. So strategic planning can happen on different scales, you know, what's three or four, maybe even five, different ways that we could go about that process. And one might be, or a couple might be, bringing in somebody from outside. But maybe there are some where we don't do that. And so what does that look like? So coming back and saying, well, what are, what are we talking about here? What are we all agreeing on in terms of this process? And so giving you some, you know, again, a few options to kind of chew on as far as what do we think is the best approach here?
I would add to that, you know, if we, if we want, are considering bringing in someone outside, then we could, uh, leave it up to them to convince us that it's, you know, they have good track record and, uh, and, and that could help with our evaluation too. What other thoughts on where we are? Lynn?
I think I'm confused. A couple of years ago, I, I was newly on the board. We sat down in the summertime and we had a meeting where like, we went down the row. Do you remember this? We went down the row and basically people were like, what do you want to do? What, what's the plan? What are your pri- What are your priorities? And we did it until everybody like ran out of ideas. Do you all remember this? I wasn't hallucinating. Okay. Is that a strategic plan? Or do we, am I, is that too simplistic?
So it's a very tactical, I mean, it is, it is a form of strategic planning.
It's like very, like I want to put a solar panel on this roof.
Right. And this is exactly, you know, kind of what I'm getting at in terms of understanding each other is people have different understandings of what even strategic planning can be.
Okay.
So it can be very tactical, which is what we did, you know, we have done in the past, which is what do you want to do, board? What do you want to get done in your term, in these two years? You know, what do you hope to, you know, what does success look like for you in serving out your two-year term? And so those were very task-oriented things. And we helped, you know, some of those things were informed by, you know, other plans that we've done and things like that. So maybe that is, maybe that is just, you know, we just want to do that. Maybe that's all we really need to do in all of this. And maybe even going through, you know, this 26 budget and that process, maybe we've, and just navigating that process and whatever comes out of it, maybe we feel that, that strategic planning is all we need to do at this point. But maybe it can be something more, you know, we're, you know, talking about, you know, larger-scale organizational strategic planning. And so like, as I mentioned in the option, you know, we could talk about, you know, who are we? What are we doing? You know, what is this, why, why do we have this village government? What is the purpose of it? What are our values? And then how does that align with not just tasks to be done, but just services to be provided? And, you know, out of that process, you know, and hopefully informed by a community engagement process in that and, and maybe some data and things like that, some other exercises that you do, you know, maybe you find, you know, going through that exercise, hey, maybe this thing that we thought was important actually isn't really that important to like anybody. And so maybe we just, we don't even need to do that program anymore, that service. Those are things that are not going to be, you know, sort of sussed out in like a tactical sort of task-based strategic plan. And so that's, that's what I'm talking about in terms of, you know, let me, you know, let's give you some options to kind of react to in terms of scale and let's all have an understanding of, you know, this is kind of what we want to do, or maybe this is what we kind of do, or maybe a little this or a little of that so that, you know, again, again, my role here is, you know, making sure you have a good process, making things, things are efficient, making sure what you do is effective. And so, you know, I can tell you what's not efficient and effective is just verbal directions off of one meeting. And so, you know, again, let's, you know, at some point when this, you know, this conversation is done, you know, let's go back, let's let the staff digest it and then bring forward these tactical, you know, operationalizing of what you guys are talking about here. So it's things that are feasible, that we see as feasible, that can be done, things that we can do with the resources that we have. And then just again, you know, points of that maybe need more discussion, like what we're talking about here with strategic planning, giving you some more options of like, okay, we'll take it back, we'll talk about it and we'll have our subject matter expertise and we can look at our resources and say, okay, here are these other options that we can start diving into.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I, I don't, I didn't foresee, or I don't foresee our strategic plan being as tactical as it was last time. I mean, that's just my opinion, I'm one of seven. But I do think that we do have as a collective group, great ideas and we have a pretty good sense of our community. So I'm hesitant to bring someone from the outside to have that discussion just because I, I'd be interested to see what we can come up with in terms of, again, less like I want to put a solar panel here, but more like I want to have these five pillars or these five broader goals for the village. Because I think that, again, I come back to when you say like, what are our values as a government? Well, what are our values versus what are the values of the next board or the next board? And I don't want to waste too much of, of anyone's time creating something that the next person in my seat could completely disagree with and toss out the window. And then we've committed time and money to something that isn't permanent.
Should we take a break? Anyone? Yes?
I would, I have just, just because it's
Please.
Kind of piling on on top of Lynn. Well, I guess the, I, I guess to me, we need a really long-term strategic plan and even if it's not ours to finish because others will come and replace us, we need to get, have those goals out, there's those targets out there that are five and 10 years out there. We've been very tactical. That was one of the difficulties I had when I first got on the village board is I presented a document, I'm like, well, this isn't a strategic plan, this is a tactical plan. You're doing this and this and this and this. It's like not a goal, not a, not a direction of what and who you want to be. And that's, I don't know that we really have a, we have a feel for it. I think if we talked about ourselves, we come up with some of those kinds of goals and some of those core values, but I don't think it's really documented or really stated and it's probably not something that people can find easily. And I think there'd be good value in that. And if the future board wants to change it, then they'd have something to change because it's easier to work from something than to, to start, start afresh every time. And if you come in with new priorities and new priorities, that's great. You may change your future, change your vision for the future, but we have to have that longer, where, where are we going to go in 10 years? And I don't, I don't, I don't know that there's a good painted picture out of what, what we look like in 10 years.
Five-minute break?
Sure.
Okay. All set, ready to go? Okay. Took the liberty of checking with Martin and he feels like he has direction going forward. But I know Amanda had additional comments and maybe others would have a closing remark. Amanda, please.
Yeah, I mean, if you're going to treat this like a closing remarks thing, great. I think, I, no, I mean,
Doesn't have to be.
I just, I, I'm just going to say, I appreciate the discussion tonight. I think this was great. I loved everybody's ideas and I think we're on the right track. I would say something that I'm going to do and maybe I would encourage other board members to do because I'm curious to hear where you're at. I, I'm sure that somewhere there exists a list of all the services that the village provides. I think I've seen it before somewhere in a packet, I don't know, on the website, we'll figure it out. But like having that and looking at that and then also figuring out our, like what values we think are important to the community and, and figuring out what our goals are and just have those listed out kind of as homework. And so that next time we come together, we, we have ideas and things and we don't have to spend time thinking about it in the meeting. That's just what I'm going to do, so.
Anybody else? Lynn, please.
Quick question for you, Amanda, maybe Martin. As the straight A student that I used to be, just kidding, how long do we have to do this homework? Like ballpark, when do you think we're coming back to have this discussion? I think it'd be helpful for the community to know, like, what's the duration going to look like here between conversations?
I would say at least a month.
Okay. Wow, that's true.
Yeah. I'd say at least till end of June. Yeah. And maybe that, that's maybe a conversation here, we should talk about, you know, do we want to have a separate special meeting again? If you feel like we can do it in a, a regular village board meeting? I don't know that it matters either way, I guess. But yeah, I think based on, you know, what I've heard in terms of just kind of designing the process to kind of react to, I'd say probably end of, end of June, early July. My tenure as Director of Community Development will end in a couple of weeks here, so hopefully. But yeah, so then I, I hope to, you know, spend my time and focus and energy in, in this sort of area in combination with the budget process that's getting underway. So, yeah.
Words of wisdom or Jason?
I, I just want to say thank you to everybody for the conversation and our, our, our new council, Larry, had remarked to me after a meeting how, how well we work to, how well we, board members respect one another in agreement and disagreement here, and I continue to appreciate that. And maybe we set the tone for the Facebook conversation, we just take it up a level. That's what we were saying. But no, I really appreciate the thought and the conversation. I look forward to working with you all, even though this is going to be a challenge.